This is our 15th regular session. Welcome, everybody. I appreciate all the folks turning out tonight. We have, tonight, delivering our invocation, Councilmember Munson. And after the invocation, if everyone would join us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Dear God, give us the wisdom, strength, and courage to do what is right and necessary to make Hagerstown a better community, and in so doing, to well represent those who sent us here to do their business. God, you know that Hagerstown can be a great place, and we, the mayor and council, have the power to make it a great place. Help keep our passion and our urgency to do so foremost in our thoughts, decisions, and deeds. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Just a few announcements. We are operating on the rules of procedure adopted on December 18th, 2012. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. We ask that you put everything on silent or vibrate. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule is noted on our agenda. We will have a budget work session next Tuesday at 4:00. We'll also have work sessions on May 7th and May 14th. We'll have a public hearing on the budget also on May 14th. And then our regular session for May will be on Tuesday, the 21st, and we will not be meeting on the 28th of May. At this time, we're going to take citizen comments. I would like to remind everybody that comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded. Your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. I do know that we have quite a few people here signed up to talk about the dog park. I can tell you that we do have a clear majority that is favoring the Fairgrounds Park site, so just in case you were trying to convince people, I don't think you will have to try very hard. At this point, I would like to invite Mr. Peter Perini to the podium. If you please state your name and give us your comments. Thanks. Hi, Peter.
Mr. Mayor, mayors, excuse me. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Zimmerman. My name is Peter Perini, and I'm not here to talk about the dog park. Just spent four hours sitting through your previous work session on two very important topics, and I just wanted to, based on my last 12 months or so of working on potentially trying to bring the Board of Education to downtown, I just wanted to make a comment or two. Clearly, two very important topics that needed to be addressed. Having baseball in Hagerstown is, I think, culturally very important for our community, and I certainly hope you all find a way to make that happen one way or another. I am not about to tell you, you know, my thoughts or opinions because that's not my place on where it should be or shouldn't be. And I think what you heard through the various comments that were given is if you ask 10 people about where it should be or how it should be done, you will get 10 answers. If you ask 100 people, you will get 100 different answers. That is why, in this great country of ours, we have a democracy, and we have elections, and we elect leaders to lead our communities. And my take out of those two kind of joint, back-to-back joint discussions in your workstation is this: This community is screaming for leadership. They need you, members of the council specifically, to be leaders and make the decisions and move forward. Somehow, three of you need to come together on making, on some of these decisions and get it done and move forward. I don't care which three, and it may not be the same three on every decision, but you have to figure out how to build a consensus of at least three of you and move forward because we've talked these things to death, and I certainly would encourage you to make some movement in the very near future so that those of us who are interested in working in downtown and redeveloping downtown have the comfort level that there are going to be, that, you know, there are going to be, there's a serious government behind making, making things happen in downtown Hagerstown. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity to make these comments, and I appreciate the hard work that you do and the hard decisions that you make. And good luck with the rest of the commentary for tonight.
Thank you, Peter. The next person I would invite to the podium to speak would be Ms. Ruth Nepper.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm not here about the dog park either. I sometimes forget-
Do introduce yourself for the record, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Ruth Nepper. I live at 45 West Baltimore Street.
Thank you.
Sometimes I forget what I have to say, so I've written down a letter I'd like to read. I want to know what you plan on putting downtown with this plan you're exploring. Are you going to put something down here that can be enjoyed by all or just the people that commute down the road to get the higher salaries? I've seen an artist's concept of what it looks like, but is it really what you're striving for? If it is, the rendering is beautiful, but is it practical? We need something to bring people back downtown: A movie theater, a restaurant where we can afford to have dinner without costing a week's pay, and then take in a movie; a couple of shops where you could actually go in, look, and afford to buy something. We need something that has groceries and a pharmacy, you know, something like Walgreens or Walmart or Kmart; someplace where we could pick up our medicine and not depend on someone else to drive us to the drugstore. A lot of seniors don't drive, and sometimes our families aren't available to take us where we need to go. It's bad enough that we have to take cabs or buses to doctor's appointments without having to take a bus to a grocery store. I'm one of the lucky ones. I can still drive, but what's going to happen to me in a few years? Beautiful is nice, but it doesn't get people back downtown. I can just see people driving through and saying, "Look how beautiful downtown is, but where are all the people?" I remember when I was growing up and stayed with my sister who lived in town. I thought, "I can't wait to live in town. Now that I'm here, there's nothing left." I think if enough of people came downtown, the crime rate would go down because there would be too many people down there to report to the police what's happening. Can you imagine people walking through town? Not only would it be a beautiful thing, but it would be healthy, too. And finally, and I want you to know, I am a Suns fan, but I think, finally, it's disgusting. Suns are threatening to move out of town again. I think the people of Hagerstown should wake up and stop doing things because they're threatened into it. If the Suns don't want to stay here, a new stadium is not going to keep them. Just look who their general manager is now. Don't you think he has something to do with them looking elsewhere? I think we need to see about fixing the stadium, and that if they don't want to stay, that's their problem. The Suns have a loyal following here, and if they want to lose that, so be it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Nepper. Mr. Tim Light?
I'm finished.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time earlier.
I appreciate that. Ms. Julie Licklider? Did I get that right?
Licklider.
Licklider, please, come on up. Tell us who you are, where you're from.
Hi, my name's Julie Licklider, and I live on 108 East North Avenue. I love Hagerstown. I'm all for a dog park, but I'm not here to talk about that. I love living in Hagerstown. I bought my house from the city, a city rehab home. We love it. We've lived there 10 years. I'm at the point now I'm ready to walk away from my home because of these rental companies that come in and do not take care of their properties. They move infested people with bedbugs to different houses to where it's landed right next to mine, and now I have them. And I can't even express to you that right now is a financial hardship for me to even have to call an exterminator. The, all that that entails is a nightmare. My son is tore up with bug bites. I've made several attempts with Valley Properties trying to coordinate times where we can exterminate together. For lack of a better word, they're liars. They've never once called me back, or they tell me they're going to do one thing, and then they don't show up. When you have companies like this that take a family and they put them in a house on Lee Street, the house becomes infested, then they say, "Okay, well, we'll move you to Elizabeth Street." Then that house becomes infested, and they say, "Okay, well, we'll move you to East North Avenue," and that house becomes infested. I live in a row of five. My house now has bedbugs. The house on the other side of the house now has bedbugs because they are not properly exterminating their property. What they're doing is they're having their maintenance men come in and set foggers off. Chase them right into my house. Chase them right in. And I've had professional opinions from three different companies say, "You don't treat bedbugs that way because that's what happens, is they run," and they did. So what I'm asking for is maybe some guidance on to who holds these companies accountable for the way they're managing their properties because it's now my problem. And I love Hagerstown. I love that the Fairground Park is right up the street, and I can walk, take a two-minute walk for my kid to play, you know? I love the conveniences. I can walk downtown. I can, there's so much that I can do in Hagerstown that I couldn't do if I lived outside So really, that's where I'm at, is I'm frustrated because they're not, my problem is, I can put out $1,200 to exterminate my house, but if they don't do anything with their property, I'm going to get them back, and I'll have to pay another $1,200, and they're going to get them. And then they'll set off a fogger, and I'm going to get them back again. So I'm just saying, if I have to go through this one more time with them, I will willingly walk away from my home and everything that's in it and go rent a house that's not attached to anybody out in the middle of nowhere. That's how frustrated I am. My kids, it's an embarrassment. They can't have friends come over. I can't let my daughter or my son go play somewhere because, my gosh, how drastic or terrible would that be if they, a little critter took a hitchhike, you know, and went and infested somebody else's house? So I just really want, like some help on, you know, who holds these people accountable because what they're doing is wrong. It's wrong. They need to properly take care of their properties, not the way they want to, which is the cheap and easy way, but the way that's right so that everybody around is, you know, taken care of. So those are my comments, so thank you for listening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you would, please. She also, on the other side of the empty house, there's another family that the husband has said, you know, they've invested a lot, but they really are ready to pack up and move out because of nothing that seems that can be done. And I know that we've gone to code, we've gone just about everywhere that we can go short of that probably Julie's going to end up having to have a civil suit filed against, but that is not protecting anybody else in this community. There are people that just continue to go on and move and move. We had the situation up Old McDowell, 11 families. Did they get clear of when they, in fact, were taken out of that apartment building? We don't know that, and this could become an epidemic, and that's what has to be stressed. But how do we handle it legally? What can we do per code?
Because this will, this will definitely become a problem for Hagerstown. I mean, I would think that if I was an investor and I was looking for a place in Hagerstown to invest my money, knowing that there was a bedbug epidemic would keep me from doing that, for sure.
And is this your landlord?
No, I'm a homeowner, attached.
That was my impression. It's the adjacent rental properties.
Valley Properties.
Valley Properties.
Yeah.
I think the State Health Department is another resource, this kind of thing.
I will consult with our city administrator and get back to you because I do think that this is obviously a serious problem. It's affecting you, it's affecting your neighbors. It's not going to go away if people keep-
It's not, it's spreading.
Not really addressing the problem. So, so I really appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm her neighbor as well. I'm just here to support. I have the same problem, and I'm at 410 North Lucas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You would be Carol?
Yes.
Would you like to come and make a statement?
No.
Okay. Just echoing her sentiments. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Heather Holman.
Heather Holman, Summit Avenue, Dog Park Task Force member, president of Historic City Park Neighborhoods First, small business owner and citizen of Hagerstown. I support a dog park and I support the Fairgrounds Park location. I speak to you tonight as a private citizen. I feel as though a dog park would help the city's revitalization. My husband and I are very familiar with revitalization as, over the past four years, we have turned a three-unit apartment building back into a summit or a single-family home, and therefore we have invested our time and money in Hagerstown. We are very involved with our neighborhood and participate in neighborhood cleanups to make our neighborhood a nicer place. Like a lot of double-income families, my husband and I do not yet have kids. We do, however, have two dogs that we consider our kids. There are dozens, if not hundreds, of places for parents with children to bring their kids in city limits to play, yet there is nowhere we can bring our dogs to play off-leash safely. Latest census data shows that there are more people with dogs than people with children. 38 million households have one or more children, where 43 million households have at least one dog. As I said before, I'm not a parent, yet my tax dollars are going towards paying for playgrounds, sports areas aimed at children. I'm not complaining about this. I am just asking that Hagerstown be as dog-friendly as it is children-friendly. I say children-friendly and not family-friendly because families come in all sorts of shapes and sizes, some of whom who have dogs instead of children. For Hagerstown to be family-friendly, it needs a dog park. As with any project the city attempts, there are bound to be the normal bunch of negative residents that have come forward protesting any progress the city could make. I believe these residents are afraid of change and think that by voicing opposition to everything they can, they will prevent change and keep Hagerstown the town they grew up in. Unfortunately, our city has already changed from the once-bustling city nicknamed Hub City. Our buildings are abandoned, no one is shopping downtown, we've lost our trolleys, crime has increased, property values are down, poverty is up, passenger trains no longer stop here, and most importantly, people have lost their pride in our once-great city. I support revitalization, I support a dog park, and I also support a new stadium. I support any of the Ripken locations, but like many, feel the Summit Avenue location would best impact downtown. I live on Summit Avenue, and like a lot of my neighbors, we would rather see a baseball field than an asphalt parking lot. The strip of houses on Summit Avenue across from the proposed location largely consists of low-rent apartment buildings with high crime. Some, like a lot of the downtown area, are abandoned. I think it is not mentioned enough to opponents of the building, a stadium, that more than a decade ago, the city and county jointly raised taxes to visitors by doubling the hotel motel tax from 3% to 6% with the plans of building a new stadium with this money. Approximately $1 million a year has been raised since 2001 for the purpose of a new stadium. Previous opponents, some of whom are not even Hagerstown residents, have been able to bully their way into not building a stadium at the Summit Avenue location. These same opponents will oppose any location. The opponents have no data or facts as to why they oppose the stadium, yet every opinion they claim can be countered with actual evidence and data. I think that the council needs to take a stand and listen to data and experts who know about revitalizing a city rather than people who are afraid of change and want to keep our city on the decline. The positive and hopeful citizens are looking to you, the mayor and council, to move our city forward into the future, and you can start tonight by voting yes on a dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up would be Dr. Dolan. Hi.
I am a small animal veterinarian in the local community, and I'm here to speak in support of the dog park. I got some information off the Internet that I'd like to share with you. There are many good reasons to have a dog park for the mental and physical health of our canine children, as she said. Exercise contributes to the overall level of fitness, physical and mental health in human beings as well as dogs. Behavioral problems, I think, would be greatly diminished if our canine friends got a lot of exercise, and exercise on a leash, on a leash is oftentimes not enough. They need to be able to run free and have room to really exercise hard, and if you listen to most, a lot of behaviorists, or even Caesar, I'm a big fan of Caesar Milan, a bored dog is a bad dog. They can expend their energy in very negative ways, such as separation anxiety, destroying things in your home, and getting rid of that pent-up energy that way. Having a community off-leash dog park will also help strengthen the human-animal bond, so that is also good for owners. And I agree with the previous speaker's statements that hopefully that would contribute to the revitalization of Hagerstown itself and in the town. I used to be skeptical, skeptical of dog parks, and I happened to be in New York City and sat and watched two dog parks up there for an hour and a half each time, and I'm thinking, "Oh, my goodness, I'm going to see a dogfight happen," but it was absolutely amazing. I saw no aggression, happy dogs of all breeds, running around, having a very, very good time, and actually very well behaved. I think that, obviously, you would have to depend on the owners to know their dog's personality. Not every dog can partake in the activities in a dog park, but I think overall it is a very, very good thing, and I would like to see it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Renee Bergen? Did I get that right?
Good evening. Yes, that is correct. I'm a dog park-
State your name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Renee Bergen, 913 Mulberry Avenue.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you. I understand that there's a consensus for having the dog park. I really, on, on behalf of myself and my dogs, we greatly, greatly appreciate it. You know, I can't tell you how much it's needed, how much it's warranted, but, I mean, I think it's been evident and proven that the need is there. And, and I do, and I am a property owner. I do have a pretty decent-sized backyard, but, you know, my dogs, they don't play with each other. They do on occasion, but whenever I bring my dad's dog over and he has a very small Chihuahua mix, it's a different, it's a whole nother, it adds, it adds a whole nother personality, and then they play. But, so, like I said, I just, I just want to say thank you. I really do appreciate it. And then on a side note, to kind of echo some of the things that Ms. Nepper said earlier, I myself would like to see an Amtrak station here, or, you know, and/or bringing in the bus station back. I do believe that there's, there is a need for that. You know, I could be totally wrong, but we have the rail system here, and I would like to see it utilized. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nate Mackler. Did I get that correct? Nate?
Nate Mackley.
Mackley, sorry.
That's okay. Millie Parkway, couple on the north end. I am in favor of a dog park. I hope that you guys will all, of course, vote for the dog park. And my really only comment at this point is that Green Castle has a dog park and Hagerstown does not, and I would hope that we could do a little bit better. Green Castle's a wonderful little town, but a little bit bigger than Green Castle. We've got more going on. I'd like to see the same type of thing happen here, and I am, of course, all in favor of whatever we can do to revitalize this downtown.
Thank you. The real question is, is it a dog park or is it a park for people with dogs?
Dog park.
Just a rhetorical question. Thought I'd throw that out there. Next up is Terry Shoemaker-Cright. Did I get that correct?
Hi, I'm Terry Shoemaker-Cright. I live in Lindsay Lane, Hagerstown, and I live in a townhouse, so I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to take my dog to play at the dog park. We have gone to dog parks down in Virginia Beach when we were down there for soccer tournaments. There were, you know, huge soccer fields, and in the back, they had a huge dog park, and our dogs just had a blast playing in those areas, so I'm very excited, and it sounds like we're going to get one, so my dog will be excited, too, when I get him and tell her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Shoemaker.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Shoemaker from 833 Marion Street, no relation to Terry. I'm also in support of dog park. I think Fairgrounds would be a great location. Not only is it very wide open, but it is multi-use park, so I am blessed with children. I could take my kids there to play while my husband watches the dogs play, and perhaps afterwards, we could all walk around the track and get some exercise. Another thing that I think is good about a dog park, something that I noticed when I first moved to Hagerstown, I grew up in the South where people hang out in their front porches and chat with each other. You know all your neighbors, you know the people three streets away, and you know what they're doing here. I've lived here for 10 years. I know my next-door neighbors. Nobody comes out. Everyone stays in their houses. People don't say hi to each other. I think when you get people's dogs out playing together, you're naturally going to talk to people, know your neighbors, know the people in your community, and learn about other things that people are doing, and that's what makes a city great. Thanks.
Thank you. Tony Bittner.
Tony Bittner, Haven Road, Hagerstown. I make this very short and sweet. These are your people. This is what they want, bottom line.
Thank you. Sandra Feliciano.
Hi, I'm Sandra Feliciano from Liberty Street. We came here to, my husband and I came to Hagerstown from Cleveland, Ohio, and I came from York, Pennsylvania before that. Both of those places had dog parks. Wonderful places, the dogs had a great time, and in a way, you're right, a place for people with dogs because you get to know your neighbors, you get to know the people that you work with, the people that you don't necessarily associate with all the time. You have one thing in common, and that's your dogs, and they are like our children. It builds camaraderie in the community, and it can also indirectly reduce the crime rate because when you know your neighbors, when you know the people in your community, you stand up for them, and you watch out for them, and you take care of them. So I'm really excited to find that there is so much support for the dog park, and I want to thank you for that and encourage you to go ahead and get that passed, and let's get our dogs out there playing together.
Thank you. And last but not least, Raymond Feliciano.
She said everything.
What she said.
What she said.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and that will close citizen comments unless there's anyone else out there that would like to come forward. No? Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. Stick around. There's more fun to be had. I encourage you to stay. We are going to move on to approval of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes presented for the mayor and council meetings held on March 5, March 8, March 12, March 19, and March 26 of 2013.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the approval of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The minutes are approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the consent agenda be approved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
I have a question on item one, under quantity one. This is for the demolition of the structure at 12 North Prospect Street. Quantity one says demolish and dispose of vacant motel at 12 North Prospect Street. Backfill the site to a three-to-one slope and surface with four-inch layer of stone. Remove the driveway sidewalk on Prospect Street. I guess I'm just a little confused. When the property is demolished, I assume what you're attempting to do is match the grade similar to what the county did, and to me, I think that leaves it a bit less conducive for the potential for redevelopments. I guess I envisioned more of a flat- I guess I envisioned more of a flat site being left, but that is not what is being proposed here.
Well, you're right. What is proposed is that the grade of the slope would be matching pretty much what the alley does. So, it would, it would drop from Prospect Street down to Mr. Widmire's parking lot at a three-to-one slope. The only way we could leave it a flat site is if we would fill that in, and I don't think that wall-
Or completely remove it.
Yeah, but the wall that's facing Mr. Widmire's property, I don't think is a structural wall that could hold all that fill to make the site flat with fill. Right now, there's basements under there, so that back wall is not a retaining wall, so to speak.
Okay. Is there a reason you selected stone instead of simply grating it with seed?
Well, that we could change. We looked at something that, do we want to have to mow it and maintain it, or should we just put stone on it and-
I'm just curious, the propensity for, I mean, that's four inches of stone. I'm just curious of the washout that may occur, or the continual maintenance of it. In other words, if it's stone, you're gonna have some type of maintenance regardless from the neighbor of the stone washing out.
Right.
That's just, that's up to you guys.
The way we solve that is we're gonna leave a little bit of the wall against Mr. Widmire, sticking up. It would drop down, and then the slope would go from there so that the water would kind of fill in behind that wall and not run over on its property, hoping that it redevelops too in the near future.
Quickly. Yeah, I just, I'm just curious, the aesthetic appeal of it as we leave it after demolition. It's just-
What remains of that wall, we're planning to paint. That's in the contract, and I think it'll look, I mean, we're gonna have to spray it, keep the weeds, you know, from coming up through the stone. But it's either that or mow it, and we could go either way on that, but we chose to put stone.
My preference is to mow, but that's-
And we could go either way.
Thanks. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, all those in favor of the approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. Next item. We don't have any unfinished business. We're on to new business. Approval of a resolution, lease agreement with the State of Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation, storage space at 14 North Potomac Street.
Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution to amend the existing memorandum of understanding with the State of Maryland Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation for a tenancy in a portion of 14 North Potomac Street consisting of approximately 287 square feet of storage at said location. State of Maryland desires to extend the term of the tenancy for the storage space at said premises from July 1, 2013 until March 31, 2015.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second? A motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the approval of a resolution, a license agreement with Jose Gomez of the El Paso Restaurant.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and council approval of a resolution authorizing the city of Hagerstown to enter into a license agreement with Jose Gomez and El Paso Mexican Restaurant for the use of a city refuge corral in connection with their commitment to an investment in downtown Hagerstown.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. If the agreement were to be terminated, who would bear the responsibility for the continual maintenance? Because we are sharing the use of this dumpster with another entity.
Right now, it's to be maintained from the ground without a dumpster inside of it.
Okay.
If this were to become null and void for any reason, then it would resume the way it's being maintained right now by the city.
Okay.
Without a dumpster.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it. The motion carries. Next up is the approval of a resolution, loan to grant business acceptance pass, package with Jose Gomez of the El Paso Mexican Restaurant.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a resolution authorizing the city of Hagerstown to enter into a land loan to grant business assistance agreement in the amount of $6,000 with Jose Gomez, owner of El Paso Mexican Restaurant, in connection with its commitment to downtown Hagerstown and anticipated creation of new jobs in city center to be paid for from the Economic Redevelopment Fund.
Second.
Second.
I think Mr. Metzner got it first there, so it's a motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Good stuff for the city of Hagerstown. Next up is the approval of city center Hagerstown Spring Sprout Grants Program.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of a motion authorizing the city center Hagerstown Spring Sprout Grants Program to support and expand existing businesses and assist in increasing their efficiency and giving them a competitive advantage in the marketplace. The grant maximum will be $500 per business, and the total available for this program is $7,000. This grant program will be offered to for-profit businesses only. Source of funds is the Economic Development Business Incentive Line item in Economic Development Operating Budget.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of purchase of wastewater division vehicle number 527.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the purchase of wastewater division vehicle 527 in the amount of $364,151 through the Maryland General Services Administration contract holder GS 30F-1012H, Maryland Industrial Trucks, Inc.
Motion made by Mr. Alshier and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up is the acceptance of the Empower Clean Energy Communities Grant.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve the acceptance of AM Conservation Group, Inc. as a qualified contractor for services provided under the 2013 Empower Clean Energy Communities Grant from the Maryland Energy Administration. For the Hagerstown Light Department, the amount of $43,460. The grant funds will be utilized in the purchase and distribution of 1,100 energy conservation kits to qualified HLD customers. Energy conservation kits will consist of four 13-watt mini spiral CFL light bulbs, one LED nightlight, one furnace filter whistle, one smart strip electrical surge protection strip, one canvas bag for distribution of contents, and one hot water tank wrap included in 700 of the kits.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion?
Could Lou explain what each of those are?
I was gonna say-
If you-
Anything to that list?
If you can tell me what a furnace filter whistle is, that'd be great. I think I get all the other stuff.
I want to thank the Utilities Department for pursuing this grant and for bringing it forward, and, and I think it's an excellent thing to do, especially during Earth Week. How appropriate. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of a Maryland Theater funding request. I'm sorry, I skipped one.
Yeah, I think we got this, this stuff a little bit in the packet.
Okay.
Metzner read was actually for item G, which is the contractor.
Right.
So, do we need to not go back?
Go back to the acceptance of the Empower Grant.
Yeah, did, we missed that one, right?
We kind of, we mixed them up.
I think you read that off as the heading, which was the right order. We had the motion-
In the wrong order in the packet.
So, if we could get a motion on the grant, yeah.
I hereby move the mayor and city council approve the acceptance of a 2013 Empower Clean Energy Communities Grant from the Maryland Energy Administration. For the Hagerstown Light Department, the amount of $71,000. The grant funds will be utilized in the purchase and distribution of approximately 1,100 energy conservation kits for Hagerstown Light Department customers who meet the low to moderate income guideline set forth within the grant.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Good work. Thank you. All right, now, we have a motion for approval of Maryland Theater funding request.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of city funding support in the amount of $22,411 to fund 50% of the cost for the upgrade of the Maryland Theater sound system. The other 50% of this funding will be provided by Washington County. City's funding will come from current fiscal year net revenue in the general fund.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. I almost feel like we should wait for this one until the end so that all of our guests stay. But I guess we'll go ahead and consider the approval of a dog park at Fairgrounds Park.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the installation of a dog park in Fairgrounds Park. Mayor and council hereby authorize staff to construct the dog park in accordance with the plans attached, contract with vendors, and expend up to $40,000 in excise tax revenue designated for park development to develop the basic park. This motion has the following conditions. Fundraising efforts by the Dog Park Citizens Task Force to raise the balance of funds needed to provide additional amenities for the park estimated at $20,000, including lights, security cameras, and benches. Two, the city will relocate the basketball court to an area just north of the Dog Park and Fairgrounds Park. Three hours, the Dog Park operation will be consistent with the policies adopted by the mayor and council for park facilities. Park construction shall commence here the park can be opened to citizens' own about June 29, 2013. In approving this motion, the mayor and council hereby acknowledge and express their appreciation to the citizens serving on the Dog Park Task Force and the work and recommendations which led to the creation of the Dog Park.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna vote for this proposal, although I think the Hager Park site, as I proposed, expanded as I proposed, is the more preferable site because it's got a central location, because it has immediately adjacent parking, because there are no residential backyards or even near proximity involved. And I believe that the costs will, would wind up being about the same. However, I have supported a dog park all along. I just don't think the site's right, but I'm gonna vote for this because I think we need to have a dog park.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, I do. I did get a response back from the railroad, and they apologized for not getting back to Rodney before the meeting. She is sending information that will be as far as the people holding real estate and examining that. They do not lease any properties, but they said perhaps in the future that the city may be willing to trade land in order to have an area for a larger dog park. All right?
Good work.
So, I'll just have to wait to see what they get back with. And again, we're looking out where the city park area is at, but not connected with the part that is being utilized.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No, and for the reasons that I mentioned previously at the first meeting.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next is the approval of a transfer of police department vehicle.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval for the Hagerstown Police Department to transfer an unmarked 2003 Ford Crown Victoria to Doug Lowry for use in transporting his bloodhound to crime scenes. Mr. Lowry is a city resident who volunteers this service to the city and continues to be a valuable resource for the police department. Mr. Lowry and his bloodhound have been instrumental in the recovery of evidence in apprehension of suspects for the police. This vehicle will replace the unmarked 1996 Ford Crown Victoria that was transferred, transferred to Mr. Lowry in November 2007. I apologize, Mr. Lowry, all I could think of was that Bad Boys movie. Mr. Lowry, the police officer, so I had to stop mid there.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshier, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is approval of after-school program at Parkside Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the proposed, proposal provided by the Hagerstown Housing Authority to provide after-school programming at the Parkside Community Center located on Summons Avenue. This program was originally funded by the State of Maryland Sea Safe Program, but in recent years has been funded through the city's general fund. Through this program, the Hagerstown Housing Authority provides a variety of constructive after-school activities to area youth. This program run for the 2012-2013 school year with a cost of $18,881 in city funding support.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item for consideration is the approval of rain insurance policy for the 2013 Western Maryland Blues Fest.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval to purchase rain insurance policies for the 2013 Western Maryland Blues Fest at the following maximum amounts. $20,000 policy for Friday, May 31, 2013, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., and a $60,000 policy for Saturday, June 1, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Total cost for insurance will be $9,660. Funding would be from the Blues Fest budget in the public functions account. 5% of the rain insurance proceeds would go to the Maryland Theater for their risk of the beer and wine sales.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. All those, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item for consideration is approval, excuse me, of license agreement with CB Properties, LLC regarding the alley 4-18.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a license agreement with CB Properties, LLC for the installation of an outdoor seating dining area in a portion of alley 4-18 designated in the attached license agreement. The city's approval of this motion includes the following. The licensee shall be responsible for all costs of construction, permits, and other costs associated with the intended use. The city will be provided access to utilities located in the alley at all times throughout the license agreement. The city will provide up to a $2,000 grant for modifications of the alley entrance and storm drain inlet to, to provide support for the business owner, and the agreement is for three calendar years and cannot be terminated by the city. It can be extended at the request of the business owner, known as CB Properties, LLC. If instead, at the end of their three years, CB Properties, LLC expresses in writing to have the city quick claim this portion of the alley, the mayor and council hereby authorize a staff to prepare the necessary plats deeds and deed of easements and ordinance to execute the quick claim. The cost of these items will be evenly shared between the city and CB Properties, LLC.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yeah, we had a very productive discussion with this, the proprietor of the deli restaurant. I assume he's, is in agreement with these terms?
Yes, I think the only thing is, he may not wait three years. He may go ahead and try and do the quick claim sooner, so he'll just be sending us a letter sooner rather than three years.
Sure.
Otherwise, it seems like he's fine.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment? Please. Rodney, I'd like to thank you. I know this was a difficult issue because of, in particular, because of those sewer lines running under that, that portion of the area we're talking about, but you did a really good job coming up with a viable plan and getting it to agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. And as long as you're commenting, I'd like to, along with, thank Rodney, thank traffic and parking. In all the years I've been on the board, this was the first time that board actually held a, I don't know if you'd call it an emergency meeting, but say, the first one that wasn't a regularly scheduled meeting. We had a meeting, and because of what would appear to be a need for speed and urgency, that board requested that the citizens be polled, and then we come back in one week and meet and approve it. And they also did a very good job, and spent a lot of time on this one issue to get it resolved as quickly as possible.
Good work.[1793.83]
Thank you, Lou.
Motion made and seconded is, uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next is, uh, consideration of approval for permanent seating at the City Park Bandshell.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of the purchase of benches in City Park Bandshell in the amount of $37,199.23 to Playground Specialties Incorporated in Emmitsburg, Maryland. The benches will be permanently installed per the attached plan.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Just a point, uh, that I made at the work session. Uh, I am opposed to this, uh, in large part because I think it takes away from the spontaneous nature, uh, that exists here at the bandshell, uh, in terms of seating for folks, but, uh, it's just my, my opinion of the park.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Next is the consideration of approval for an application permit and open container exemption for University System of Maryland Hagerstown graduation celebration.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council to authorize the application permit agreements attached with the university, permit agreement attached with the University System of Maryland. Also, according to the City of Hagerstown's Open Containers Law, mayor and city council may permit the possession of alcoholic beverages in open containers on the streets, lanes, alleys, sidewalks, parking lots, or public ways of the city during special events upon application or upon its own initiative. Therefore, mayor and city council formally approve the possession of alcoholic beverages, beer and wine, in the University Plaza for May 20th, 2013, for the University System of Maryland Hagerstown Center graduation celebration. Hours of the event are to be 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Last, but not least, uh, consideration of approval for an agreement between the Hagerstown Area Police, Police Athletic League, Inc., and the Washington County Board of Ed in the City of Hagerstown for completion of tenant fit-out project at the PAL building.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve a motion authorizing staff to enter into a three-party agreement with the Hagerstown Area Police Athletic League, Incorporated, PAL, and the Washington County Board of Education. The agreement authorizes a tenant fit-out construction project in the city, sit, in the city-owned building at, at 520 North Cannon Avenue. The scope of the project includes the construction of activity rooms and a lounge area and a locker room. Students from the Technical High School will provide the necessary labor to complete the project. PAL will supply the required materials. When complete, the new space will allow for the expansion of programs offered through the Police Athletic League. And, Mr. Mayor, may I please introduce, because I don't know where he was at, but we have a representative from the Police Athletic Club out here, and he's one of our own, and he was going to speak tonight, but I don't know where he was at. But that's okay.
Thank you, please, introduce yourself.
Introduce yourself, Nick.
While he's coming up, I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Metzner.
Hello, I'm, uh, Brian Burke, I'm with the Washington County Sheriff's Department. I'm the treasurer of the Hagerstown Police Athletic League, and we have recently, uh, restructured our whole organization, uh, for the better. And, of course, we're leasing the, uh, Fairgrounds Park building under the grandstands. And we, our program's just, real brief, we have a wrestling program which has 85, uh, youth, area youth, um, and part of this construction project is to benefit them so they can expand to around 100 youth. Uh, we also have a basketball program that we use at the MLK Building, and we have a, um, karate program. I just started a CrossFit program, and we have an after-school program that we just started here about two months ago, and so far, we have around 50 kids, all, uh, actually every one of them is inner-city kids here in Hagerstown that come there, and we're, uh, trying to structure that as we go along. So I just wanted to introduce myself and let you guys know what we're doing and where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and, uh, these guys took me on a tour of their facility, uh, about a month or so ago, and it's an excellent program. They're doing great things there. Mr. Munson.
And each, each of you is a volunteer, right?
Yes, sir, everybody's a volunteer.
And we wanna, we wanna say thank you. Thank you for doing your very best to keep the youth of this community straight. The community benefits from that greatly. Thank you.
I think this is a great example also of the partnership between the city and the Board of Ed, um, and also want to thank the students at the Technical High School. Okay, so we've had a motion by Ms. Nye and a second by Ms. Metzner, Mr. Metzner. Any other discussion?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it. Motion carries. And that does it for new business. Now we are on to the city administrators' comments.
Just a few quick ones. Uh, Brian works very hard at PAL, also Nick Varner, one of our police department officers who was here earlier, I think he had to sneak out, but, uh,
He did.
Nick's also part of that group, does a great job over there. Councilmember Munson, uh, mentioned what I wanted to say. For, for several years, we've talked about the amount of volunteer support that the city receives. We get it in different forms, such as what Brian and Nick do at PAL, what the task force does in the dog task force for the park. So we're very appreciative of the volunteers. We, we, uh, benefit from their talents and their time. And then I wanted to thank the mayor and council. It's been a long day of meetings with important and, uh, heavy subjects for us, so I appreciate your time and work today. That's it for me.
Thanks, Mr. Zimmerman. Council comments. I'll start to my left with Ms. Nye.
Alright, um, this is for, where's he at, Rodney? Alright, and junior. Now that there is going to be a dog park, I want you to get back to me, week to week, as to where that volleyball, okay, is going to be played, where the basketball is going to be played, and where there can be a pickup game for kids that cannot afford to pay organized sports that can be allowed to play over at Fairgrounds Park.
Basketball, we're playing the, the-
Kate, that is part of the project.
Okay, I know you are. I just want to be kept updated, please.
Sure, absolutely.
Alright, as people ask me, I want to know. Um, the big thing was today, in today's paper, was the gang issue. Unfortunately, the City of Hagerstown has been blessed and long before now with those coming in here that are affiliated with gangs. Our police are good, but there are more than what we need, there are more of gang members than what we have as police officers that are going to be able to really handle this. We are short a lot of police, and we, we're gonna have to do something. Either it's going to have to be a pay increase, something has got to entice these people to come in here and to want to be police officers. Um, the way that it is now, and for what we have actually heard, and from what we are seeing on the street, there are not enough, and there has got to be something done about it. Um, I would love to see a clean sweep of all of those that either have had drug connections, guns, anything, as to go in these homes and be able to do something. Unfortunately, this did not start with just our own that is living in this community. They have come from everywhere, including the prisons that we let out. They go to wherever they were as far as the arrest, and they automatically come back here. They then indoctrinate the ones who are willing to listen to them, and that's what we have. We've got anywhere from New York, Baltimore, Prince George's County, and who knows where else. We even have ones from North Carolina, and I don't remember that gang name, coming up here. We've got a major problem, and citizens have to be very aware of this. Know your neighbors. If there is anything that you feel is suspicious, if you don't feel comfortable talking to a police officer, know someone that you know you can talk to, that they can get to the police department. This is not a hoax. This is for real, and I live where it is for real. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nye. Mr. Munson.
I, I would like to, uh, compliment Ms. Nye on her compliment, on her comments. This is an issue which she's been involved with for many, many years, uh, at least nine or 10 years. And we've had these kinds of problems in the past, and we've dealt with these kinds of problems, but they've come back now, and they're worse than they've ever been. And it's pretty clear that there is some kind of allure about Hagerstown and Washington County with regard to drug dealing that we have to do something about. Now, there's no question, the downside of having 81 and 70 cross is drug deals in Hagerstown, and much of it's coming from New York and from Florida. But it's up to us to deal with it as a community and as a government, and, uh, I think we need to hear from our chief of police on this as soon as we can, to let us know what's going on and how he intends to resolve this problem. I know that Chief Smith was involved with this problem, uh, with MS-13, uh, some years ago, and he came up with a plan, it worked. Apparently, it worked anyhow. And, um, so we need to hear more from the police department to let us know what, uh, what's happening and how we're gonna get rid of this problem, hopefully once and for all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Metzner. Thanks. Mr. Brubaker.
Yes, uh, we had two very, uh, complex subjects at work session, and I won't comment on the details of them. I do want to say that the elephant in the room is the budget, which we didn't discuss very much tonight. I brought it up in terms of, we face a problem two years out, a big problem, uh, if we're going to finance large projects. We haven't resolved that problem, nor have resolved several other issues that have to do with financing, either one of the issues that we talked about today. So, uh, to those that say, "Just do it," it isn't that easy. We all have a fiduciary responsibility to balance the budget, to make sure we get a return on investment. No businessman would just do it without figuring out the financial consequences. I'm familiar with return on investment, familiar with rate on return, and I, I think this council needs to look diligently and work hard at these proposals, not just do it for the sake of doing it. Yes, we have to find a way, but we have to work hard at it, we have to explore it, and we have to make the equation work between the budget and all these proposals. We just had a, the talk of more police or ra, and, uh, or increasing employee salaries. Uh, I know it wasn't a specific proposal, but we're legitimately under those kinds of pressures as well. So it, it's not an easy equation, an easy task we face, and, uh, we're working hard at it. We're not, but I think just doing something is not the solution either.
Mr. Alshire.
Couple of things. Uh, the first is, uh, I, I agree with Mario. We had a long conversation tonight about some larger-ticket items, and we have had limited discussion, uh, about the impact on the budget and the improvements that we can make to it, uh, one of which I continue to pursue, which is in relation to outstanding debts, uh, on our utility accounts, uh, and having a more stringent approach to ensuring that those that receive city utilities pay for them in a timely manner and are penalized, uh, through late fees and other appropriate measures when payments are not made. The, uh, second item is, uh, and also, uh, in relation to that item, the, uh, outstanding amount of debt that we have, uh, through parties that are not paying, uh, or keeping up their end of the bargain, so to speak, on our, uh, revolving loan funds. The second item is in relation to the SOR presentation. I would only reiterate, in anticipation of our executive session meeting, uh, which appears to be occurring next week on that issue, uh, I will, uh, will not accept, uh, any direction that, uh, is not, uh, in stringent requirements with city code as it relates to placing that type of process out to a necessary, uh, public bid process, uh, in accordance, uh, with both state and local law, if state and local funds are to be used. The next item is, uh, in relation to, uh, and I, and I know, Mayor, that, that you clearly, uh, have the, the prerogative to sign, uh, such documents. Uh, the only point I would make is in relation to the, uh, document, uh, regarding the Mayors Against Illegal Guns, is in point number four of that document, i, it was unlike the others because it didn't reference, uh, keeping, uh, those types of firearms, uh, off of our streets away from illegal operations. All the others use the word illegal, and therefore I had some concern, uh, with that specific point. Uh, and the next item is in relation to Mr. Perini's comments earlier, uh, about democracy and the need for, uh, there to be three votes. It doesn't matter who votes, what votes, uh, which group makes that up, up here at this table, uh, to move things forward. I would note on the agenda tonight, out of our 14 items, nine of those 14 items were economic development-related items. They were small, sure, but at least nine of them were economic development-related, uh, most of which, uh, received a unanimous vote in favor, uh, all of which received a majority vote in favor. So I do not apologize when we have, uh, only four hours of discussion on the larger items that take $30 million and $40 million to do, uh, to ask for a little more patience, uh, in coming up with intelligent and informed deliberations, uh, on those bigger-ticket items and, and finding consensus to do so. Uh, and then the last item speaks to the issue that Penny raised in relation to, uh, the recent article on gang activity, and frankly, I think it ties, uh, into some of the issues raised about the lack of utility bill payment. I think it relates to the issue the young lady brought up about bedbugs. All of these relate to quality of life and what decisions this body makes as an entity over the next, uh, several years in terms of how we want to properly manage, uh, and direct, uh, that, that thought process into ensuring that citizens have, uh, citizens of Hagerstown have the best quality of life that we can, uh, possibly manage to provide. Uh, and that means, uh, you know, aggressively pursuing issues related to gang activity, aggressively pursuing enforcement of, uh, lax rental, um, operations, uh, to ensure that transient populations aren't, uh, you know, negatively impacting, uh, their neighbors, aggressively pursuing, uh, proper management of our utility accounts, uh, to ensure, you know, uh, our budget management. Uh, and all of that boils down to the quality of life, and so for me, uh, I would only say to folks out there that, that, that I am fully supportive of doing the necessary things that it takes to ensure that as we look at those types of issues, we're ensuring quality of license, life is the best that we can provide, uh, to the citizens. And I think good avenues for that are, are measures like our Neighborhoods First and other, uh, organizations and committees that we form.
Thanks. The only comments I want to offer are just that I really appreciate working with all of these fine people up here on the dais, and, uh, we will certainly have spirited debate and deliberation about these important issues, but I think what Councilmember Alshire just pointed out, I think is what motivates us all to serve in this capacity, which is to create the best quality of life and, uh, maintain that for our citizens. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you so much.